I call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Jim, would you like to state your name, where you're located, and if there is anyone in the room with you?
Yep, Jim Baker. I'm in a private home in Sun City, Center, Florida, and there is someone in the room with me.
Thank you. All right, action on the minutes for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and February eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second. You can fight that one out. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yeah.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you. Manifest documents are right here. Those are gonna go around. Looks like there's no nominations, no resignations. The superintendent is not quite back yet. That's all right. Does anyone have a subcommittee report? Jamie does? Anybody else?
I do.
Jim, you do as well? Okay.
Yep.
All right, why don't we skip over Tom's report for now and we'll go, we'll start with subcommittee. We go back to his if no one has any objection. Okay, all right, Jamie, do you want to start?
Sure. These are minutes to the Finance Committee meeting, February eighth, twenty twenty-three. Attending were myself, Ms. Basa, and Mr. Angel. Mr. Edelman was not able to attend. The minutes to eleven thirty twenty-three were approved, and Basa motion for approval, I seconded, and the two of us both approved. Business administrator reports, inflation's at six point one percent. The high was in June of twenty twenty-two at seven point six. All IRS forms have been issued to all employees and vendors. Cash balance on hand as of twelve thirty-one twenty-two was five million, two point four nine sixty-five. Revenue's recorded as of twelve thirty-one twenty-two was twenty-nine million, seven hundred thousand. The town of Kingston's Newton and Fremont are all current on payments. Notable revenues for the month were interest income at eleven thousand, five hundred, Newton impact fees, thousand, approximate numbers. And the refund of contribution to the New Hampshire retirement system of a hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Expenses, non-health expenses as of twelve thirty-one twenty-two were fourteen, were approximately fourteen million, four hundred and ten thousand. Incumbrances were approximately sixteen million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand. Total unencumbered was nine hundred and eighteen thousand, approximately. Fitzpatrick noted that the last number reported to the committee was one million, eight hundred and two thousand and uncovered. This has been cut in half. Fitzpatrick asked where, where was the nine hundred thousand spent as salaries and benefits were accrued for the whole year already, and they are eighty percent of the spending. Mr. Angel stated he is struggling as to how to pull the requested date and report to the committee. He noted new hires would not have been accrued if the position was previously unfilled. Fitzpatrick very concerned with the spending level, reducing by half the unencumbered amount. Mr. Angel stated the one point eight million balance was September month-end number. Ms. Basa asked where we were last year at this point in encumbered and balances versus this year. Mr. Angel said normally by the end of December, we're at eight percent, and presently we're at two point nine percent. Fitzpatrick noted that as of nine, one, unencumbered balance was two point one million. As of ten, one, it was one point eight million. As of twelve thirty-one, it was nine hundred thousand. If continued spending at this pace, we'll have no money left in unencumbered funds at the current rate, is at three hundred thousand per month, and there are six months to go, and only nine thousand dollars in unencumbered funds. Mr. Angel noted that he had asked all the departments to get all their POs in for the rest of the year, so expects there will be funds remaining at the end of the year. Fitzpatrick noticed his concern that when you ask department heads to get in all needed POs, that this could be interpreted as there's money to spend, so get your wish lists in now and as a form of a PO. Mr. Angel stated this was not the direction being given. Fitzpatrick stated he really needs to see where the money is going in this, and this change in encumbrances must be captured and provided to the committee, we have talked about in the past. Mr. Angel agreed to provide this, noting that he's having difficulties pulling it from the system. Mr. Angel stated he believes this account, the non-health spending, will be about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars of unencumbered at the year end. This assumes that you have no year-end spending programs. Fitzpatrick asked for reconciliation where the spending is going. Twenty twenty-three budget was three point four million higher than twenty twenty-one actuals. In his hearing, we plan to virtually spend all of it. Mr. Angel noted in twenty twenty-one that he froze all spending as concerned he would not have enough to meet payroll, and he agreed to work on the reconciliation. We moved on to health expenses. Expenditures to twelve thirty-one twenty-two are at one point eight nine million. Incumbrances were at two point eight one million, remaining balance is at point six nine million. Fitzpatrick noted that this is only a sixty thousand change in the prior amount period for the same periods that we just reviewed. We then got into the trust balances, so I'll read through the trust balances. Special education trust fund, two hundred forty-two, eight nineteen, interest earned of five seventy-four, fifty-six. Capital improvement trust fund of three twenty-five, two fifty-eight, with interest earned of seven sixty-nine, sixty. Unanticipated educational expense fund at two fifty-one, nine twenty-four, with interest earned of five ninety-six, ten. Unanticipated utility cost fund, seventy-five, five fifty, with interest earned of one seventy-eight, seventy-seven. Capital revolving fund of one eighty-one, three eighty-two, with rental income of eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. When you add the contingency of five thirty-seven, eight seventeen, we have a total fund of one million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars in our different trust and contingency funds. Fitzpatrick noted that the trustees of the trust funds had contacted them about further investments and liquid needs. He spoke to Chair Dutton and noted the board had authorized the spending of three hundred thousand in trust money this fiscal year, and they'll try not to tap the funds for those needs. We must at least have that amount liquid. This means with a three hundred thousand dollar liquid in trust in between contingency and revolving trust funds, another seven hundred thousand readily available for cash, about a million dollars. Mr. Angel discussed a file he provided on a list of budget adjustments report from the past. This is the first time the committee had seen the report. Substantial discussion, I won't leave all the questions and answers as to what was in it. But clearly, we need to get a better understanding of this. One of the items that was pointed out was we had seven-digit transfers to and from account ten. And also all the count twenty-two, which is a grant money, was washed through this, and the committee doesn't see that. And Mr. Angel noted that he needed to put some of these transfers in in order to trick the system and allow him to move the POs from one year to the next year, in terms of having open POs. So clearly, this isn't a report that has to be looked into further to better understand. It's the first time we're seeing the report. And I had asked Mr. Angel if there's a way to get this in an Excel file to be easier to sort and figure out what, what it's telling us. The custodial RFP was approved at the facilities committee, and Mr. Angel would push it that out. And then a number of budget adjustments were brought to the committee to consolidate detailed line items into a general supply account. So within special education, nine hundred and seventy, nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents was asked to be increased into a general special education supplies fund and reduced from about ten other specific supply. Which basically means that Mr. Kennett would like to manage this with having the supplies come out of a single supply fund instead of having to track it through and different funds. The other one was for professional contracted services of twenty thousand, same thing, going to a general fund and coming out of the about eight or ten different smaller funds. Ms. Basa stated that she was okay with the consolidation to save effort for a little gain, given the small amounts of monies involved. Motion to accept the budget adjustments, seconded by Fitzpatrick, and it's approved. The van purchase adjustment coming out of healthcare account was presented. Mr. Angel said we could delay that for a month. Ms. Basa stated she preferred waiting and putting the adjustment to transportation, I, the future month we had more. And then we wrapped up the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Yep. The facilities committee met on Friday, January twenty-seventh. The meeting was held at the high school. It was called and ordered about two thirty PM. Attending were Dawn Dutton, Rick Edelman, business administrator Matt Angel, superintendent Tom Ambos, and Jim Baker via Zoom. In his business administrators' report, Matt stated the following. The auditorium upgrades will start on January thirtieth. Four circulator pumps failed at DJ Bakie, two have been replaced with new and two will be replaced with rebuilt pumps. Matt and team are considering installation of a catch basin to deal with an area where water runoff collects in front of the memorial school. At the high school, they have met with the HVAC vendor on maintenance issues involving the age of the system. The first step of a loading dock is broken. GFI outlets are aging out and will be replaced shortly. A septic line at the head of the leach field cracked and is being repaired. And investigation into leaks around the library windows continues. Recommendations by four contractors. The recommendations were very similar. The committee asked Matt to try the recommendations of one of the contractors to reflash one of the windows to determine whether that would resolve the problem. Matt is looking into purchasing a new piece of equipment to replace older pieces of equipment. One is for snow removal, the other does lawn work. After lengthy discussion, Rick noted that before we go ahead with that, he would like to know specifically what equipment we are replacing, including the attachments and uses, and what we will be able to sell the used equipment for. Dawn brought up the issue of what local maintenance is available and whether the maintenance provider would be able to pick up the equipment and drop off if needed. Rick also requested that Matt get bids for purchasing other comparable equipment options, including desired attachments, as well as the cost of leasing them. The committee reviewed the trust and revolving fund balances as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And the amounts are the same as the finance chair just reported. The committee approved two facilities use change forms. Want us to add a bike rack donated by Liam Sands and family to be installed at the middle school. Another was a donation by the class of twenty twenty-one to plant with the help of the grounds department two cherry trees and install a plaque that will state, class of twenty twenty-one, senior gift, if you want your child's mind to grow, you must first plant the seed. The trees might be planted by the soccer field or other location preferred by the grounds department advisor. Matt is securing grant funding for window film options to enhance the security of the school windows. Also installation of security barriers at key entrances. He'll report more on that as information comes in. Matt reviewed a draft RFP to spec and price out night custodial work to private contractors. Like many districts, Sanborn is short-staffed in some areas, including custodians, and this could be an efficient way to handle the evening custodial work. Matt currently has independent contractors working one of the wings. This proposal would provide additional info and be the next step to evaluate, aiding extending the option using outside contractors for more of this work after July first. Rick suggested that a key performance indicator statement be added to the RFP so that bidders know that there will be KPI standards and they will be expected to meet. Matt reported he has the final results of the LED lighting audit of all schools, including the old middle school. The committee discussed the results of the audit. Jim reported LED information provided by Jamie Fitzpatrick, who has spent decades in the lighting business. Information included costs of bulbs versus fixtures, along with options for utilizing existing fixtures with new LED bulbs. Jamie offered to meet with the committee and bring an associate to advise the committee further for the purposes of understanding the best option so the committee can finalize a clear and comprehensive RFP. Jamie's associate is the product manager responsible for all the Sylvania tubes coming into the United States. She has offered to do this for free. The committee discussed meeting as soon as possible, probably by video, and agreed that Matt and Jamie would work out the meeting date and time. Depending on state rules regarding video meetings, this meeting might be a work session rather than a formal meeting. To avoid the possibility of there being a quorum of school board members, Jim would not attend. There being no other business, the meeting was adjourned at about three twenty-five PM. The meeting can be viewed on the SAU seventeen dot net YouTube channel. That's it. Thanks.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Great.
Forgot about that till I found my notes.
All right.
Um, I, Mr. Ambrose and I attended the SST meeting on January thirtieth at four PM. We had some student speakers talk about the agriculture division, which was really great to hear. They're working currently on a student survey to the juniors and seniors to see what they're hoping for for next year for a course catalog. They are working with the PAT, the principal advisory team, which consists of the principals and the counseling, on looking at a pre-engineering and embedded art credit. They're looking to see if maybe some of the digital marketing and the digital media might be eligible for an art credit, so they may not have to take art at their, their, you know, traditional school. So they're working on that, and they're also look, working on the regional agreement between all the schools that will be going. Mr. Ambrose, if there's anything else to that you could add, and they're having an open house on April fifteenth, or Bring Back the Trades event at SST. They'll be giving tours of the school and vendor, vendors, and they also had a really great, they had two field trips at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, and they already have a few students who are eligible for employment post-graduation.
Awesome.
And our next meeting is March twentieth.
Great. All right. Can you do your report in six minutes or less?
Um, in less, because the primary thing that I wanted to focus on is how excited we are about our basketball. I just wanted to take a minute. I did, I talked to Coach Wayne today. Told him that, that we were very grateful for his hard work efforts on behalf of all the students. I just wanted to acknowledge the students and their effort and thank them for everything that they did, and it's just pretty exciting. So other than that.
Back-to-back championships.
Second year in a row.
Second year in a row.
Back to back.
Be happier. So that's all I got tonight.
Awesome. All right. We have six minutes, and then we have to go to our public hearing donation. JJ?
Today, Student Council attended the annual NHISC, New Hampshire Association of Student Council's Winter Southern Tier Conference at Timberland High School. It was attended by the Student Councils of four schools, including Timberland, Exeter, Salem, and Sanborn. We were split into random randomized groups from the entire pool of people, so we were mixed up with people from all the different schools. We did several activities, most of which were refreshingly unique compared to other conferences that we've gone to at other schools. This included things like a human knot puzzle, jigsaw puzzles, trivia, et cetera, and it was in the form of a competition, so it was a lot of fun. And we did some team building stuff as well, and it was a, it was a great experience. And then we reported on stuff that Student Council here has been doing, and we listened to reports from other schools and shared ideas, had some time to talk with everyone. It was really nice. Our next conference is the statewide NHISC conference on March eighth at Salem High School. The bowling team season has unfortunately finished up, but we had an amazing time and we improved greatly over the season. And one of the coolest things about how, how bowling did is how deep, about bowling in general is how detailed the stats of it is, and one of my favorite stats from the season is that we, we were the third best in the state in our improvement from our individual to our team matches. So we, it just showcases how great of a team we were, how much fun we had when we were working together. I mean, it was great. And just as importantly, I'd like to recognize sophomore Gabriel Pearson for qualifying for the state championship meet in the individual category, which happens this Saturday, so congratulations to Gabe. The boys' white-out game on February sixth was a massive, massive success with the, with large amount of fundraising from what I heard. I don't have numbers, but done for all the different organizations that help out with the athletics. So that went great. The boys' team pulled off a really close victory of sixty-two to fifty-eight over Hanover, led by Chase Frisell with twenty-five points and James Thompson with twelve points. Student Council recognized World Kindness Week by running a kindness letter delivery box. Students wrote letters, which could be anonymous if they wanted to, into, and they dropped that into a box where Student Council members would deliver them each morning. Students who put letters in were entered into raffles for a couple of different items, including a really nice water bottle, some Sanborn merch from the school store, and Amazon gift card. The winter semi-formal dance is coming up this Friday, two seventeen, from seven to ten PM here at the high school. Funds from this dance will go to helping our senior trip graduation and the many, many other senior class expenses. There will be pizza, snacks, drinks, and drinks for sale, and tickets cost ten dollars and are being sold at the door. And winter carnival is almost here. It starts this Friday as well, with Sanborn Pride PJ Day, with events and spirit days happening all the way through next week up until break. The Student Council does, has been working really hard to ensure that the pep rally, which is on Thursday, two twenty-three, is one to remember. The entire school is super excited to participate, and next meeting I will be very excited to report back who wins.
Great. All right. We have probably a minute and a half until we have to go to public hearing, so we'll call for our first public call. Anyone wants to get up and share anything? You're like, don't even look at me. Come on, Kate, you don't want to get up there and talk? Okay, okay. All right. Well, we'll just, actually, while we're waiting for six thirty, because I don't think we have time to really get into anything else. Is anyone opposed to moving seven point five, which is what they are all here for, up up ahead of everything else after the public hearing, so that they can go home and don't have to sit here and listen to us flabber anymore?
That's what I'm saying.
They're all plenty, they have plenty of character. All right, great. All right, so after we do this public hearing, you guys are, you guys are on. All right.
Do we want to move Ms. Mitchison up and do the vaping after? So do the
Yeah, we could do graduation. We can move seven point three up.
Graduation and senior trip kind of.
Yeah.
It would be nice.
Five and seven point.
Oh, okay.
So.
We're trying. We're trying.
Try though.
We're saying you have enough character, and Tom's saying you need to build more.
I did not say that. I did not say it.
All right, it is six thirty, so we will move on to our public hearing on the five thousand dollar donation.
Start off with that. I can start.
All right.
We received a generous donation again from John and Laura Bletzer, and the funds are going to be used for students in need. And they just really wanted to give back to the community. We really appreciate the gift. It's gonna be doled out by the guidance department, and it's gonna be used for items like jackets, hats, gloves, really anything a student in need would need.
Mr. Bletzer was great, and he just said that if there's any gray for me to decide.
Okay.
And so the guidance counselors and I talk regularly. I started an email group with them after our last meeting. So on the twenty-seventh, I met with guidance, and we talked about a variety of issues that'll be coming up soon, the board, but we've been having a regular email group, and I reminded them of this great donation. It's amazing what, what five thousand dollars can do. Her shoes, jackets, mittens, hats, it's awesome. So we're really grateful for it.
Right. Does anyone have any comments?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
It's gratitude. We'll be sending him a very nice thank you letter and a tax write-off document.
We send him a little, maybe Sanborn swag.
Yeah, let's do that, Matt. Let's send him Sanborn swag. Okay, we'll do that. Great idea, Heather.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Personally, I like the scarf, but maybe we'll go. You know.
All right. There is no one that wants to speak on it. Do I have a motion to accept the donation from the Bletzers?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie? And myself. All right. Thank you very, very much. Okay. Senior trip, you guys are on.
I'm good to go.
Perfect. You don't want to stay there, JJ?
We need one question on this.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move. I am getting.
Other projected.
Yeah.
Oh, they're great. Maura, Matt and I were just reflecting on the joy of the past. Thank you. I really didn't. That's like setting you up like the fall guy.
Yeah, perfectly.
Isn't it possible?
I did the math. People total.
You look pretty amazing. I heard it was over there.
Why call someone?
You see, it shocked me.
We're good. So the twenty, the class of twenty twenty-three is proud to present our proposal for the senior trip. We want to do, we want to go to New York City on June first through second, which is Thursday into Friday of that week. So here's, start off with the agenda or the proposed agenda that we, we, let me start off with the fact that we booked, or we talked to a travel agent for this, so we're working through her. She's in charge of all the actual booking and financials, so that that's as much out of our hands as possible, so that it's in the hands of a professional who knows what they're doing. She gave us this agenda. Five AM on June first, depart from, depart on coach buses from the high school. She gave us about six hours for the bus ride, seeing how we're going through traffic hour, so six hours is about what we expect. At about eleven AM, we're, we get to New York City. And then we eat lunch, because I'm sure that we'll all be hungry. Forgot to mention, we're gonna do at least one rest stop, because six hours is a long time for some people. I could go ten hours straight, but you know, there's always those people. Can we stop? So there we'll have lunch, and then right after lunch, we will meet our tour guide. Then we will go on a ferry ride on the Staten Island Ferry, where we will get amazing pictures of the Statue of Liberty. This picture was taken, I'm pretty sure, from the Staten Island Ferry, so that's the kind of views we'll get. It's gonna be pretty neat to see. And then part two of the day, we'll be seeing the nine eleven memorial, doing a tour of Lower Manhattan, and then dinner that night, and then by seven PM, we will depart for the hotel on the buses, and then we will check in shortly after, and then by ten PM, we want lights out. Important to note is that lunch and dinner are both included in the cost already, so people don't have to pay extra for those if you want to, or I'll talk about that later. Breakfast at the hotel is also included in the cost, so that's just the breakfast served at, at the hotel. Nine forty-five AM, we check out from the hotel. About ten AM, we depart from the hotel to go to Times Square. We have some free time in Times Square, but it is in groups accompanied by chaperones. The groups will be done by room, which I'll talk about more in a couple slides, but the chaperones will be assigned to rooms, so it will all be pretty. It'll all be, and everyone will always have a chaperone, adult chaperone with them at all times, so there's measures in place that no one will get lost in the hustle and bustle of Times Square, because there's a lot going on there. You can, kids can go shopping, take pictures, et cetera. The shopping, if they want to go shopping there, that's not included. They have to bring their own money for that, if they'd like to do that. We will also have lunch again, which again is included in the cost. And at one PM, we will go back to the bus and depart on the motor coach back to go home, again, about six hours with at least one rest stop. Frowny face, and at about seven PM, we'll arrive back at the high school on June second. So the pricing, this is assuming that we have about a hundred. We did an interest survey where about eighty-two percent, let's round down to eighty percent of people said that they'd be interested in going, and we have about a hundred twenty-five kids in our grade, and quick maths, eighty percent of one twenty-five is exactly a hundred, which is very convenient that we did our pricing around that. For a hundred people paying, we get five free things. We expect to use that for chaperones or students that are For a hundred people paying, we get five free things. We expect to use that for chaperones or students that are not able to pay. So we, those numbers are based on the per person cost per room, depending on the size of room. We plan to do the quad room. Simply because it's cheapest and whether or not you're in a triple or a quad won't change your experience that much and it's a significant amount of money changing. So we plan to go with the quad. The total price does is based around the final headcount. The price will fluctuate slightly. We're hoping based on that survey, we get pretty close to those numbers. Plus or minus, we're not sure if more people will go or less. So we're pretty lucky that our grade is very engaged and we're very excited and we, we are confident that we'll get near those numbers. The class account will be contributing about eighty five to a hundred per person, depending on the winter semi formal income. That's a big fundraiser for us, especially in our senior year. So we need, we'll, we'll see how much we get there. It will depend. And I forgot to mention, so there's a seventy five dollar deposit that people have to put down before. Yeah, you want to talk about that part?
So the travel agency. So the travel agency that we'll be booking through thinks that a lot of people who say that they'll go really won't pay when the time comes. So we don't want to put the pricing in, assuming that they'll go and then not have them pay and not know what to do and have to ask for more money from other people because obviously the headcount will change the numbers. So they suggest a seventy five dollar per person deposit plan just to get their headcount. So they put in seventy five dollars saying, I'm going. Count me in. And then once we have seventy five dollar deposits from everybody who plans on going, then we can reevaluate the pricing with the travel agency to make sure that everything's going to be perfect. A hundred people would be two buses. If we only had fifty, it would only be one bus. So it's obviously going to change a lot based off of what we get and what we think we're going to get. But from what I've heard around, there is a lot of interest. When we sent out that survey, eighty one to eighty two percent voted New York as their first choice, which is why this is what we're presenting to you today. Yeah. So that plan is just to make sure that everything falls into place before we're taking a couple hundred extra dollars from them.
What's included with the trip? So all gratuities that all restaurants are included. That's included for bus drivers for wait, wait staff at restaurants and all those kinds of things. That's all included in the cost already. All admission fees and meals that were mentioned previously, those are all covered by the cost. One night of hotel accommodations outside the city. We're not staying in the city. That would be a lot of money for something that you don't get that that much more out of. The, it pays for the tour guide, the round trip motor coach with with the driver's gratuity and all that. And post departure student protection plan, which is paid for on the group's behalf. That just makes sure if something happens in while we're driving there that we're safe, we're covered for that. What isn't included additional night security guards, the chaperones will be present and staying nearby in the same hotel on the same floor in the same area as the students. So that's covered. Money for shopping. If you want to go shopping, you have to do that on your own expense. And if you want to buy things at the rest stop, let's say you want, I don't know, to grab Dunkin' Donuts while you're at the rest stop or McDonald's or something like that, then that's also on you. The rooming plan. So as I mentioned previously, we're expecting to do quad rooms, which is if a hundred people go about three hundred and seventy three dollars per person, which is the cheapest option that we have. Rooms will be chosen by students through Google form surveys. The class advisors and class council will review the choices to make sure that everything is correct in the way that people request it. It obviously will be separated based on boys and girls and any exceptions to the boys and girls thing will be handled. The class advisor will make accommodations to make sure that everyone is comfortable where they're staying. And we will also make sure that we'll make sure that everything's in the correct format and we will review everything meticulously many times to make sure everything's right before we send off our final things like that. We're expecting one chaperone responsible for, we made this a little early, we're expecting one chaperone responsible for two rooms, each room with four people. That's one chaperone for eight kids. That's about, if I recall correctly, there was like one chaperone for per about ten kids or something like that when the drama department went down to New York City last summer, it might have been, or some, I forget, when was it? The fall? In the fall. And so we're about in the same ballpark and it also makes it much more simple when you room based on, or you assign the chaperones based on the room so that they can be relatively nearby. And in case anyone needs anything, it also makes communication easier. In the mornings, it makes it easier for the chaperones to check on everyone. It's just simplification. On the chaperone plan, again, the final number depends on the final number of students. We're expecting somewhere between ten and twenty, twelve and twenty. Again, there's, it's going to be assigned to students based on what room they stay with. We're expecting about two rooms per chaperone and we're expecting somewhere in the twelve to twenty range. That includes administrators and other important people, our class advisors and other volunteers. We've had several teachers come up to us and be like, when are you going to ask for chaperones? Wait, I want to go. It sounds like a great deal. Count me in just when? And we said, hold your horses. We'll, we'll get to you. Don't worry. We'll get there. Behavioral expectation. So we expect students to follow the student handbook. There are some reasonable things that will be more acceptable and some that you need to be more strict on. For example, attendance, if you're not where you're supposed to be, that is a much bigger problem than if you're just cutting class when you're in another state. An example on the other side might be phones. I don't think anyone here expects people in New York to not be on their phones. So that's something that's going to be a case by case basis.
Even I would give.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Especially at the one world trade center. It's pretty.
Yeah. And so I will have multiple administrators there and they'll be, since this is a very out of school, this is obviously way different than a school atmosphere. It has to be handled on a case by case basis. But punishments can rage from everything super small, just a warning to removal from event to removal from the trip at your own expense to anything. If you do things that are significantly, very significantly bad. It, that would be something that administrators would need to look at for further punishment. And that's a case by case thing that will be handled. I mean, because there's so many different possibilities when you're out in the world. So here's some quotes. Those are really long quotes. So just glaze those over. But basically people are very excited. Brianna said that basically highlighted that is that we've been very, we've been very responsible for the past four years. We've been, we've shown that we're very, we have big school spirit. We're very excited about this and it's something that she thinks we'll remember forever. Hannah Mullen said that our class deserves a senior trip because it's, it's one way that we would love to celebrate our experiences through high school. We'd love to cap it off with something that's exciting and that we're all super excited about. And Keegan Lynch said basically that the class of twenty twenty three had anything but a normal high school experience. The pandemic took so many opportunities away from us. And a lot of that can't be made up, but we, we're very excited that we have the opportunity to possibly go and do something incredibly fun and cap our, our high school experience off with something that we get to go and do and have a bunch of fun at compared to sitting at home in our pajamas on a Zoom call for class every day for two years straight. Thank you for listening. If anyone has any questions or comments, concerns, et cetera, we'd be happy.
I have one question right off the bat. I could. Is it really realistic that people will go to bed at ten o'clock? Because I think that Ms. Mitchison needs to raise that to eleven. I just don't see a bunch of people in New York hanging out in a hotel going to sleep.
It's one of mine.
Yeah, like we gotta have way more fun than that. But my second question is why is everyone coming home at seven o'clock on Friday? Because that's way too early. Like you can spend a couple more hours in New York and get home at nine. It's fun.
This, this was the plan that the travel agent gave to us. We are, I would love to consider that. And that's something that if the travel agent is willing to do, but all those schedules are, there's a bunch of different schedules that play in there and it might affect the cost slightly. So we'll talk with her about that definitely and we'll look into it. If it affects the cost too much, then it might not be viable. But if it, if it doesn't affect the cost, that's something we'll definitely look into.
The last thing I'll say is, is if you go to Times Square, you have to go to the Hard Rock Cafe because they have Paul McCartney's Beatle bass.
Really?
It is really cool with handwritten lyrics to Beatles songs at the Hard Rock Cafe in Times Square and one, the, the one world trade center is, we go every time we go to New York. It's important.
Definitely. Yes.
So who is the travel agent?
Ah, Kate, you want to talk about?
So her name is Kylie Harriman. She reached out to Mr. Kelly before we were even looking to book a senior trip. And he quickly forwarded her email to me when I did start to look. She is going on maternity leave soon, but she has already handed all of our like situational sort of stuff over to one of her coworkers. I believe his name is Corey. I haven't spoken to him as much, but it's through Adventure Student Travels is the name of the company. I have all of their contact information. I have her personal number. I have Corey's personal number as well as their business number and emails if you would like any of it. I
First.
Heather had her hand up.
So I have a weird logistical question. So if you're not checking into the hotel at seven o'clock at night, where are all your bags and luggage? Like, are you washing around with you all day?
The buses should be staying with. Yeah, the buses will be staying with us the entire day. So in as long as there isn't any crazy policy, we're expecting that you're able to leave stuff on the bus there. Since their motor coaches, there will be space for storage underneath.
Okay, you're going to take the same bus with the same driver.
Yes.
All right. Do you fight it?
Yeah, I, I just did a couple of points I'd make. I think it's great. You go to New York City. Everybody should go to New York City. Often. I'll make two points. You said you're going to do a tour of downtown Manhattan, take you over to the Frost's Tavern. It's one of the oldest buildings in downtown. It's where George Washington said farewell to his, his officers of the army on his way to Annapolis to turn his commission with King George that we just got ourselves free from made the comment, if he actually does that, it'd be the greatest man that ever lived. Nobody's ever given up power. So it's a great building, a lot of history. And the other one would be, you know, JJ, you mentioned if something, if somebody does something really, really bad, there's this whole page list of things that might happen to them. I'm not concerned about our kids doing anything bad. I'm concerned about people in New York City. So in all honesty, pay attention. Keep your eyes out, look out for each other. It'd be good for each of you to have something you can identify because when people are looking for you, we used to go in when we were younger, we'd all have blue pens. And when you couldn't find people, you'd yell out blue pens and then everybody would just yell out blue pens and they'd all go up and then people could see where the, where the, the crowd was. But have a great time, but be aware of your surroundings.
Okay. So unlike Jamie, I'm not going to tell you to go to a bar. My comments are more The only thing I heard you say was the rooming situation, boys and girls, right? Then you went into something like if there's I just heard boys and girls. That's what I heard, right?
Yes, separate.
All right, good.
And if there's any exceptions, then we will make sure that they are accommodated for in a safe fashion. That will be the class advisor will make sure that they have rooming that they are
Still heard boys and girls, right?
Separate, yes.
And then the only other thing is where are you staying?
We don't have, it depends on the total number of students that go the travel agent. Once we have the final number based on the deposit, she will go put, find the least expensive hotel, pretty much that, that is a respected and safe institution. So generally, based on what you said was, what she told us was like, generally they stick with national chains, stuff like Hilton or Hyatt or Holiday, any, anything that is they're, they're not, we're not staying in backroom or like backwater motels that no one's ever heard of.
Yeah, I think, I think we would want to follow up. At least I'd feel better with a follow up to Jamie's point. It won't matter where you stay, right? I think just for safety.
I guess the Secaucus is where. Lower cost, closer. You go through the Lincoln Tunnel, just like Elf.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Just like Elf.
So I'm just going to comment when my, oh, Jim's got to stand up.
That's right. Go ahead, Tammy.
When my son was here at the high school, the band and chorus took a trip to New York City, an overnight trip. And it was a great, it was a great experience. A lot of what you've mentioned is like the stuff that they did. They went to the, we went to the Statue of Liberty. They went to Blue Man Group at night. Actually, that was kind of cool and they, you know, we toured Rockefeller Center and some other music oriented sites, but it was a great trip. We had music boosters, mothers, parents, chaperone. There were five of us, I think, and Mr. Brad. So I think we had probably eight to twelve kids in our group, each of us, and that worked well. So I'm you know, have a great time. You know, be safe. But it sounds like a great experience.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And negotiation point. The longer you stay, the lesser driver is logging out. That's a benefit for them.
And when you're taking pictures with, you know, characters and stuff in Times Square, just be careful because they'll be expect money from you. Not everybody, not everybody realizes that. Not everybody's aware of that. So just make sure.
Nothing's free.
Nothing's free. Jim?
Yeah, it sounds like a great trip. As a teen, I spent a lot of weekends in New York City. I always had a good time. And I just, I have one question for the superintendent though. Paul McCartney, wasn't he in Wings? Didn't he play bass in Wings?
Yes, after he left the Beatles at the
Oh, the Beatles. Oh, okay. Speaking of the Beatles, John Lennon, go to Strawberry Fields in Central Park too.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good Central Park. That part of Central Park is great.
I've been there many times, Jim. The John Lennon's house. It's great.
Motion to approve the senior trip.
Second. All right, great. Any further comments?
I would just like to follow up on where they're staying.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
And we'll report that to you.
And I just want to say, hope you guys have a blast. I know it's been really, really crazy these past four years. My daughter graduated in twenty one and didn't get to do any of this. So I am extremely excited for all of you. So enjoy every second. Be safe.
We will. All right. Shout out to Kate for all the work she put in. She talked with the travel agent the entire time. She put in more work than any of us. So
Appreciate it. All right. We will vote this now. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Want to stay, stay the course and go to vaping litigation?
Sure, I can cover that.
All right.
Great job, guys. Thanks. Good night.
Joy. All right. So a while ago, this board authorized us to enter into vaping litigation. And the attorneys for that litigation have brought some information to us. We can either receive it in a package or we, they can give it to us with an attorney. Basically what they're trying to do is give you informed consent. And that's a higher level standard than just consent. They want to make sure that, that you know what you're entering into when, when deciding on the settlement package. So the question for you tonight is, you want the informational package? Or do you want to have an attorney present that to you? I think that you guys are probably pretty good enough to just get the informational package and make a decision and move on. Are they providing the attorney for your cost?
Yes. Can I have him present it?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, all right.
Amy?
I want the package. So even if they're presenting it, I have no problem with them presenting it. I want the package.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not that I'm doubtful or skeptical what they
Jim?
Yeah, have, have they provided any money amounts to you, Matt?
No. And, and even if we, if we're going to be discussing that, we'd be doing it non-public.
Is that going to be part of the presentation or is this just more authorizations?
I would expect if there's any
Has there been a settlement?
This is to discuss a settlement.
Okay.
And to get your approval to accept it.
Okay.
So it'll probably be in non-public.
It will be in It will be in non-public.
Thank you.
So it sounds like the will of the group is to just have the attorney come up.
Yeah. Yeah.
And my guess is it will be by Zoom because we're like one of a thousand.
Yeah, they'll Zoom to us, but we'll meet in person and non-public.
So we'll get the package prior to.
I'm hoping.
We'll ask them for it.
That before?
Yeah, we'll ask them for it. I mean, if it's the day before. Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, Jen, you didn't get to sit very long. You're back up. Graduation date and information. All right.
Hope you all have, it should be in your packet, the uh draft of all of the end of year fun graduation date excitement. Um, so a couple of things, the prom is uh sort of already, already planned. So some of these are, um, you know, pretty easy for us to move ahead with um at this point. Uh, but really just wanted to make sure we could get graduation and that date um approved tonight so that we can uh, get this calendar really going and out to families so that everybody can plan for all the uh, June festivities that are really starting. Uh, if you go back to May twelfth, which is the prom. A couple of things to note. So if you go all the way down to June ninth, where it says graduation, there will be additional stuff linked in here. Once the dates finalized with the updated uh, ticketing and seating, uh, that was all here last year. So we just have to revise that for the twenty twenty-three graduating class. It'll have um everyone's ticket section. Uh, we're gonna do the same um, mode that was used last year. It seemed to work really well to give people some preferred seating areas and then it can kind of be open seating for everyone else. Um, couple of changes with um the last day of school for seniors is important to note because of the senior trip. So that is different this year than it has been in years past. Typically, it's been that Friday. But now we would really be looking to move that up if the seniors are gonna do their trip the Thursday and Friday to really Wednesday, the thirty-first would be their last day of classes. Um, and then we'll, we'll move forward and do the um do the trip. Um, and of course, that's, I mean, if, if it still needs to be that Friday and have classes here for kids who don't go on the trip, you know, I, I don't think there would be a problem with that. So I think that would, would be okay. Um, yeah, so.
Question?
Yes.
So it says June first is the SST certificate.
Yep. So they have not finalized that date to us just yet. They gave us two different dates, so I'm actually gonna reach out to Principal Carr and see if they've thought about or if they're able to do it on the Wednesday. Um, if not.
Cause I wouldn't want, I just would feel bad if.
Right.
We discussed this.
Yep.
They may have to make a choice.
Yep.
It's really hard, but.
Yep.
You have to make choices sometimes.
Yep, Tom and I did talk about that. So, um, but again, I'm gonna reach out to Principal Carr where I haven't seen anything come through from her about that date being solidified. Um, it's just on here as.
Maybe if she knows it would.
Mm-hmm. Yep, they may have some flexibility too, so.
Yeah, if, if I heard you right, you suggested there was a possibility that uh, kids that didn't go on the trip would have to stay in class. I, I, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I mean, the, the year ends where the year ends and you either go.
Yeah.
I wouldn't make the non-going to New York City come to class for an extra two days. One is they won't show up.
Well, right, I mean.
So, like, why, what, why put them in that predicament?
And I, I would also like to know if there's any, um, if there are any students who can't afford to go.
Mm-hmm.
Because we wanna, we'll, we'll, we'll work.
We can talk with Mr. Kelly too and Senora Mercedes to
Yeah.
to kind of work through some of that.
I do not want any student to not go. And, and we'll work together to, I know folks on the board would wanna know and support.
Yeah. I guess if there's nothing else, um, need a motion to accept this?
Make a motion to accept. Oh, sorry, sorry. Can I ask a silly question? I don't know why, when I was just looking at all the schools. Have they ever gone to the middle school? That, like, when they, they go to the elementary schools? Maybe because it's the same building? I don't know. Did? It's only ever, no, it's only, it's only been the elementary schools.
Yeah, but I'm sure, no, I think last year we did do a parade and I just can't remember because now it's been a while, if the middle school, but I feel like the middle school students may have participated and I can't remember at this moment. But we did have a parade for the graduates where all, when we started the parade off.
Yeah.
Where all the uh, underclassmen stood and clapped as they went through the halls, their cap and gown. So we could easily incorporate.
It would be kind of cool for those, um, the kids in the middle school. I, I think it, maybe it's from a different perspective of for the seniors are going back to where they potentially went to elementary school, but also I think I can just see more camaraderie of the middle and the high school because they're in the same building. So, and maybe it's a different thing, but I just, I think it would be nice for them.
Sure. Um, yeah, if they participate and like.
Participate and stuff.
When, that's all, everybody else is, you know, standing out there and clapping. So it would be nice for them to be able to have them go through maybe their wing as well so they can clap them through.
Yeah.
That'd be cool.
Yeah, the SST certificate, it, it, so, um, the student goes to the trip, could they not be announced sort of and handed out at graduation?
We could talk about something.
Yeah.
To help with that. Yeah, it's a great idea. Yep.
I mean, it's probably just an extra word, right?
To work. Oh, oh, it, it's great to acknowledge it because the program's phenomenal.
Yeah, if they, that way they'll have to choose one or the other, right?
Yeah, they could at least be recognized and get their certificate. I love that idea.
Yeah, and I think we have plenty of time to figure out whichever, you know, if they have already decided that's gonna be their date, that we can figure something out.
Yep.
All right, um, did I?
I made, I started. All right. Motion to approve the calendar.
Uh, second.
And the graduation date. And the graduation date. Thank you, Tammy.
And Maura seconded. All right, great. Uh, if there's no further discussion, we'll move to vote. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, full page yearbook ad.
I'll start off.
Yeah.
Beginning part of it.
Yeah.
Um, annually, the school board funds three hundred and fifty dollars for, and they buy a, a full page ad. Um, hopefully in the manifest is a three hundred and fifty dollar manifest to pay for this ad. Um, if you guys approve it, that'd be great. And I think Tom wants to talk to you.
Oh, I, I just wanted to, we haven't, um, we usually figure out a quote and Dawn and I just haven't had a chance to do that. So we put the example of last year's quote. If someone has a suggestion of a quote that they'd like to put, they can board it to us and, or if you can say it now.
Oh, I found one. Um.
Oh.
It's a Ralph Waldo Emerson, what lies behind us and what lies before us are small matters compared to what lies within us.
If that's what the board would like to have in the quote, that'd be perfectly fine. So you could make a motion to approve and use your quote, Heather, if you'd like to.
Well, I don't know. I just thought that was a really.
Sounds good to me.
Good one.
Yeah, I love that one.
I like it.
Go for it.
Go for it, Heather, motion.
I make a motion to add the Ralph Waldo Emerson quote, what lies behind us, what lies before us are small matters compared to what lies within us in the school board page for the yearbook.
Second.
And, and approve the purchase of the.
And approve, and approve the purchase of three hundred and fifty.
Second, second.
Are you forthing this?
Got a four?
JJ's just like, there's way too much dad humor in this group.
Any further uh conversation? All right, we'll move on to the vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. All right, uh, second public comment. Going once, going twice. And we're moving. All right, um, update on the meal assistance program.
All right, um, so we've started receiving funds for, well, let me, let me back up. The meal assistance programs will donate money. And the money can be used to help pay for student balances that can, that can't otherwise afford um meals. And they also don't qualify for free and reduced. Okay, so so far we've received, I think about uh, a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars towards that fund. We've actually seen a couple of people who have specified to put it on a specific student's account. Okay, and we've tried to accommodate. Um, I've been trying to look up, um, uh, um, Mr. Edelman's um suggestion about either receiving Venmo or, and I try to look at PayPal as well. And um, so it comes with a fee. It comes with like, I think, uh, uh, one point nine three percent fee plus ten cents per transaction. And um, and I'm hoping to kind of figure out which one is probably more favorable for the district it to put on our website and receive money, like one-time donations.
Were you not, I thought you said you were also checking with the bank?
Yes, I'm trying to check with uh TD Bank, see what kind of programs they have. He has unfortunately not returned my my message yet.
Can, can we, so as employees, can we donate at each paycheck?
Yes, as employees, we can have an automatic withdrawal put into this account.
So we should, we should email all the employees and let them know that that's available.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. That's the update.
Yeah, I, I think that's great. I don't, my original thought wasn't for the teachers to start contributing, right? I, you know, I think there's questions about um, you know, their pay as it is now.
Sure.
I think, I think the idea was more for the community uh, from that outcry that I saw on Facebook about how wrong it was for people not to be able to eat. I would expect large amounts of money to be donated. So, um, I think that's where we need to focus.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but I just wanted to state for clarity's sake that, like, I could just say to Matt, take this amount each paycheck and anyone else could if they want to, but there's no obligation. And that, that is something that schools frequently do, so I just wanted to clarify.
I just, so I'm not called a hypocrite. I'm donating a thousand dollars and I would challenge anybody to match me.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right. All right. Uh, so it looks like, wow, move through this. All right, woohoo. Okay, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three at six P M with a public hearing on a donation uh, or grant to be held at six thirty P M in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Uh, the second session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three from eight A M to eight P M in the Swayze Gymnasium on the seminary campus for Kingston voters. And at eight D Merrimack Road, the fire rescue station for Newton voters. And now, uh, someone would like to take us into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letter C and K. That would be fabulous.
Uh, before you do that, can I just say one, one thing quickly? Uh, thank you for the thousand dollars. That means a lot.
My pleasure.
It really, it really, it will go a long way to help kids. Thank you.
No worries.
To anyone who donates.
Yeah, and it's, it's not so much a challenge. I encourage people to, to give whenever they can because, you know, again, the outcry I saw was it's terrible kids can't eat. I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, and we, we will, uh, we will publicize as soon as we can get this. Let's really get on this with the figuring out how to get people to be able to donate electronically because it really is a lot easier for people to Venmo.
Hundred percent.
Even if there's a little fee, it's just way easier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so who would like to take us into non-public?
I will.
All right.
I have to say, you are so moved. Move, so moved.
Second. All right, uh, roll call vote in. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, we'll take a quick, uh, quick.
Did everybody sign the manifesto?